I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, please take the roll.
Hey, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Paratchek.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
And Killen Bowen are absent with notice.
All right, do we have an approval or any additions to the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Matson.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
All right, how about action on the minutes from the August 5th meeting?
Motion to approve previous meeting minutes from 8:5 to 20:25.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Schilling.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
All right, next up, bills for payment as presented.
Make motion to present bills as presented, or to pay bills as presented. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Matson.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
All right, public comment, anybody that wants to say anything about items not on Seeing no one jumping, we will move to visitors. Tonight, we have Laura Johnson here to talk about the 2026 Park and Rec program. Laura.
All right, 2025.
Twenty-five.
Not 26 yet.
Oh, it says 26 in the agenda. Oh, so we keep track of when Teresa does that. So Teresa, she gets, that's one mark. That's one mark.
We always have to have blame on.
Early on, boy. That's as early as she's picked up a mark for a while.
Um, all right, so this year for Park and Rec, we have 120 kids registered, which is great. I think that might be one of our highest numbers we've had. For those of you who aren't sure about our Park and Rec program, it is a program that the city provides free to the children of Hartford. And we break it up into three groups. First and second group comes for an hour, then third and fourth grade group, and fifth and sixth grade. And we do cracks and games, and we meet for the month of July. Each group met from, I think, the, oh, July 7th to August 1st. And that final week, we did a party week, which was, we had the Zuma Mobile come from the Great Plains Zoo. We keep lizards, we had water games, and a pizza party. After all our bills have been submitted, it looks like we were within our allotted budget. And our helpers this year were Kathy O'Hara, Addison Jaspers, and Caleb Shoemaker, and they did a fantastic job. So it was a great year. We had no inclement weather days, which is.
Unusual.
However, I think the ground was wet every single day, and grass did get tore up. But we tried to move around, and we tore up grass in other spots. It was a tough, I think, when we said our feet were wet every single day, because it was just a humid, funky month.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, any questions?
Well, we really do, as I think we tell you every year, we appreciate that you do this, and so.
Well, we're thankful that the city provides this to the children of the free, because I think a lot of parents ask what's the cost, and I guess it's free. It's paid by the city. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, I don't know, how long have we been doing it? Do you know, Teresa? It's a long time.
Well, interesting fact, I actually helped Cheryl Prunty out in high school.
So it's been, oh, so it's been five years?
Yeah.
So it's been five or six years, is what you're saying?
Exactly. It's been a few years. And I think I've been doing it for about 10 years, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's been a long, and it's great.
Well, I know you've been doing it ever since I've been on. That's nine years.
At least 20 years, because it was here when I started.
Yeah.
It's here with you.
Yeah. So we really do appreciate it. It's really, it's really great. Any council got any questions for Laura, or?
Any way we can make it better, or help out?
Um, but any changes?
Yeah.
I know, um, I know Teresa and I talked, she had mentioned, do we need to see a budget increase? It's just tough. I mean, we're making it work. And I don't, I think things are going well. So I just, I have nothing really to add. I think the only concern we have this year, and I realize this is just a concern, is kids sticking sticks in the locks and breaking our locks at the park.
We'll change that to a conversation.
Are you? Okay.
Well, there are.
I don't want to do that other than something like that. All right, you guys will want to keep fixing it. I know. I said it. It's gonna stick in the lock again, so. Everybody wants in that closet, but anyways, yeah, I don't think so. I think it's going so well, so.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Well, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 7:05, we're past 7:05 for our first hearing. Tonight is first reading of a rezone ordinance, number 764. This is to request a rezone on parcels 23862, 20872, to residential high density. So, we know several of you are here for that. Yep?
Is that the right number that's in the minutes? You said 208.
Oh, I probably read around 80872.
Okay.
I read it wrong, sorry.
Check.
Hold on, doesn't work, doesn't work that way. This is a one-way deal.
I know. That's okay, do you find people?
So we know several of you are here tonight. I'll just mention this right off the shoot. Sean Bowen is one of your reps for Ward Two, and he is gone. He's on vacation. And he really asked us if we could postpone this, because he wants to be here when we have this discussion, because some of you have talked with him. Also, Travis Keel's gone tonight. We like, when we have decisions like that, if we have our brothers, we'd rather have all of us here so we can make, make those decisions. I know you all showed up, and we, we don't like that, but I would rather give you a fair shake and have everybody hear it. Also, the fear is, if we vote, and there's only four of us here, if one person changes their mind one way or another, it's dead. So, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying that bad, I'm just, that's the facts. Four people have to vote yes, is the way our ordinance is laid out for our council, since we have six members on the council. So, not that that's the best answer for you guys, but we have to talk about it twice anyway. It's a two-reading ordinance, so it will get two, two readings. So if we delay it one meeting, and we talk about first reading at, the first meeting in September, which is the second, maybe?
I think it's the second, yeah.
Second reading would then be on the 16th, because it takes two votes, two votes to put it in. But I'm really telling you that because Sean really made a pretty strong request to me, because he wanted to be here, since it's his ward. So, I know that's kind of, gives you got, well, you get a chance to see how much fun we have here at City Council. I mean, there, there's a side bonus there.
Can they make comments whether or not we do a vote, or does it have to be?
So if we decide to table, the discussion ends.
No comments, yeah.
Right.
I mean, I guess, I'm willing to hold off if, on the table, you know, motion, if somebody wants to speak or whatever, I mean, maybe.
I was just gonna say, if they can't be here for some reason, I know Sean wants to be here, but.
That's a good point.
Can they talk before we make any motion, or do we have, we don't have to make a motion?
I mean, can we listen to their conversation and then still make a decision to?
I think, but, but then you're also, these two members that are here, they don't get to be a part of that conversation.
Then they're, yeah.
You know, too, you know, they're gonna have, you know, they missed out on that as well.
Right.
Just unfairness, all the way around to all parties, it would pay to have everybody here, yeah.
To make sure we have, have a full contingent. And I know Daryl's gonna miss the next meeting. I think everybody else was able to be here, but he will be here for the second meeting.
Yeah, he'll be here for the second.
So, with that said, any action from the council?
I'll make a motion to table the request to rezon parcel 23862 and 80872 to residential high density. Second.
And do we want to add your motion to the next meeting?
Sorry.
Yep.
I'm going to table it in the next meeting.
That way, we got a date specific on it?
Yep.
I'll be on the next agenda.
No discussion on the table, so we will vote. Matson.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
Okay, so, next meeting, same time, 7:05, you'll be right up out of the chute, but we'll, we'll put her on for the next meeting, okay? I appreciate you all showing up. Now you can stick around and see how much fun we have. You know that, really. I'm lying about that part.
If I may, play the brief comment on the matter?
Sure.
Um, I would really like you guys to consider what, like, the potential drainage issues that this could cause.
Yeah, and we understand that.
I don't, I don't think we have any comment.
No, you don't have to comment or whatever, but just, I'd like you guys to consider some of them things, where the snow's gonna go and stuff like that.
No problem. We get it.
We hope that you do come back.
Yeah.
Please do.
Thank you.
You bet.
So, once you guys meet in September?
Huh?
Yeah, September 2nd.
September 2nd, same time.
Feel bad they all came? But it's not like we can say, we don't know until we can do it, right? You're like, I scared everybody away?
Well.
I don't think it was you.
Well, the ground's like, oh, I'm literally the only one.
Now, don't think it was you.
Was it talking to you?
I do, I mean, I, I really, I feel that's the, that's the fairest way to do it all the way around. So, all right, next up, 17, did we make it 17? Yes. 710 hearing, special wine license for Converse Wine. This is for the market coming up on August 28th.
Motion to approve special package wine license for Converse Wine Company.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Schilling.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
All right, next up, we have special event applications, two of them. First one is an amend, oh, excuse me, amendment for the upcoming farmer's market.
Correct.
To change the street closure, correct?
Yes, so just looking, we're gonna have the same kids train that they had at Chamber Block Party. And so we're just looking to expand our first street closure down to the alley by Wayne's Market House there, just so we have a little more space for them to go back and forth on first road.
Sure.
So, that's it.
All right.
Uh, motion to approve, oh geez, um, special event application for the farmer's market amendment to street closure.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Matson.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
All right, the next one is for the Witches and Warlock Wine Walk.
Yes, uh, so I think, I'm assuming you guys got a copy of the application?
Yeah, I seen Michelle signed it, so.
Yeah, no, mine didn't sign it. I signed it. Caitlin did. You just can't read it, because my signature's on it.
Oh, I seen her name on here.
I see all the, I paid for it. Yeah, she paid for it, but, you know, details. Um, so yeah, looking to do our same, basically the same street closure we do for Farmer's Market, so South Bar down to Second Street there on Main, and then a little section of First Street there down to the alley behind the brewery. Um, and to do open container, have fire pits, and then we are also having this year, we connected with an aerial artist and circus performers out of Sioux Falls. So we are gonna have stilt walkers, fire throwers, and an aerial artist coming in to do a show as well.
Wow.
So, and we've cleared all of that with our insurance. They have their own COI that takes care of any liability for them, and that's already been sent over to Dave, and approved, so. Any questions?
Awesome.
You guys? I didn't even write notes or anything, I promise.
I make a motion to approve the special event application for downtown Hartford, Inc., for Witches and Warlocks Wine Lock. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Schilling.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
All right.
Perfect. Ta-da.
Ta-da, is correct.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Come to the Wine Lock, it's gonna be a good time. We're gonna have lots of fun.
Can you make it the weather nice?
Well, we're gonna try. We did okay last year, so hopefully, yeah, hopefully it's not lizarding, naturally. Blizzard rain. I can live with the cold, so. All right, thanks so much, guys.
You bet. Thanks, Galen. All right, next up, resolution 2025-7, this is dissolution, is that the right, dissolution?
Dissolution.
Of TIF District Two. Um, this is on our TIF out here with the Windsor Group on the road. They are going to include and pave and curb and gutter the road, Second Street, from Colton Road going east to the end of their property. We ran into a snag with the property that's owned right on the corner of Colton Road and Second, the northwest corner.
East.
North, yeah, call it east. Don't be keeping track.
Not saying.
We'll, we'll call it east, because it is east.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Let's call it, whatever. It's one of them directions, their heart. And we need to, we need to dissolve, dissolve this TIF, and then we are going to annex that land in, so then we can include it in the TIF and get it covered by those, by that paper. Is that right?
We're not gonna annex the property yet.
Just the road.
Just the road.
Right.
Um, they'll still be in the, they don't want to be annexed or whatnot, but when you have property in the county, the property doesn't actually go, if it's along a township road, to the center of the road. And so that's why we originally included them in the original TIF district. Um, but when we sent it into the state, the state and county contacted us, says, well, since that's not annexed in, you know, because we include the whole property, you know, we can't do that. So after talking with Tom and the county and state, basically, what we need to do is dissolve the boundaries of this original TIF. We are gonna plat out just the road, and then we're gonna annex just the road in, and then we can include the new boundary line with just the road and the rest of the parcels, so.
That won't affect that property's taxes at all, or anything like that? It's, it's just, just a TIF district.
Actually, they should go down, because it's less property.
Well, yeah, but, but then, but it's not within the city, so I wouldn't think that would change anything.
They won't own it anymore. It'll, it'll come under the city, yeah.
The state's not gonna approve their property now.
Right, right, yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah. So, um, like I said, after talking with all the state and the county and Tom, that seemed like the easiest way, the cleanest way to do it, if we want to get that road. And actually, then it won't be, that portion will not be a township road, it'll be a city road.
City road.
Yeah, which makes sense, if we're gonna prove it, we're gonna maintain it, we're gonna, you know, take care of it.
Yeah, we're already maintaining it all, Second Street, two mile anyway, so.
Right.
So, cost to the city attorney fees ISG miscellaneous, are, I'm assuming we, we are incurring those expenses?
Probably the, I mean, not.
Shouldn't be a ton, but I'm saying.
Be a ton, the biggest thing would probably be just the plating costs and.
Right.
That should be expensive.
That's honest.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is not part of their town.
Yeah, that's the only reason I was asking the question, I just wanted to.
Right. And I have talked with the Windsor Group, the developers, um, they know what's going on and why we have to go through this process. Shouldn't put them behind it all. Anyway, they've got to plat the property and zone the property too, before anything can move forward. So we, we can do this all in conjunction, yeah, together.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-7, be a dissolution of TIF District Number Two.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none will vote. Matson.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
All right, next up, we have a discussion on an MOU between Dakota State University and the City of Hartford for a cybersecurity mitigation plan. This is a program came in the email to myself, and Teresa, I think you guys got it too, and I thought, man, this would be a good idea, maybe to have Teresa go to. And come to find out, Dakota State has a grant that if we actually find something we need to do to help our cybersecurity, they will pay for it, right?
Yeah, so, so they sponsored a workshop last week, which I attended, quite a few municipalities there, but basically, in conjunction with the state, with Dakota State and the state of South Dakota, they have a program where they help, they have some funding from municipalities and counties to basically do a cybersecurity analysis, you know, basically look over, you know, and test how good is our cybersecurity. If we need, find any vulnerabilities, if we need an update in software, hardware, whenever that may be, they do, through Secure Estate, they have a $7 million grant, which they will pay for those update grades directly, and it'll never be at a cost to the city through that. So, it's a great opportunity, and not only do they do this assessment and help us with, you know, making sure we're as secure as we can get, they also help us go through and help prepare a mitigation plan. So, basically have emergency plan in place for cybersecurity of, okay, you know, how can we mitigate it? And then, okay, what if we do have a breach? What do we do? Who do we contact? What if, you know, you know, have all those numbers in place, those contacts in place, have those procedures in place. So, putting that plan together, give us a lot of information, will take some time, but they'll help us out through that. So hopefully in the next few months, we can actually get a mitigation plan in place for that too. So it's a good program, and like I said, it's not at any cost to the city, so.
Get in line as fast as you can.
Exactly. And they said ransomware, you know, is the biggest thing now, especially with cities and counties getting hacked, and, you know, it, it's a big thing. They says, it's not when, or it's not if you get hacked, it'll be when you get hacked at some point, because China's the leading one, China, Russia, they are continuing trying to hack their systems, so.
I'll motion to approve MOU between Dakota State University and the City of Hartford for cybersecurity mitigation planning.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none will vote. Schilling.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Well, thanks for going to that, Teresa. I think that's, I think that's.
It'll be a good program, and it's gonna be.
I mean, and honestly, we can be first in line, that's not a bad thing.
Yeah, no kidding, agree.
No, yeah, sure.
Agree.
I don't know how to prioritize anything, but yeah. Um, I, I think what we kind of have a good leg up is that they start with this assessment, it's called boundary fence or whatever. We did that a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago.
So we've already gotten that done. So we are already past step one, we go to step two, so, that's good.
Yep. All right, we're gonna move down to reports. First up, Hartford Area Fire and Rescue. Uh, the chief's report is in your packet. They do have one action item they would like to have us close off a portion of South Street between Western and Kingsbury on September 4th and October 1st. No barricades are needed or anything, he just is asking that that's, that's okay, or do we need to make that into motion, so it's?
Yeah, because you're closing down a portion of the street, so just motion to be able to do that. They're gonna do their, I think, the hose testing.
Yeah, we lay them out like 200 feet at a time.
Okay.
When we go down the street.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to close, for street closure, to conduct annual fire hose testing and certification on South Street between Western Avenue and Kingsbury Avenue from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. on September 4th and September 1st.
October 1st.
On September 4th, and October 3rd.
That's one Cindy, let's get her in, let's get Cindy on the list.
Thanks.
And we have a second. Any more discussion? Tough crowd tonight, man. Hearing none will vote. Matson.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
Good enough. Next up.
I would just say their public safety day is, it's Saturday.
Oh, it's this one, this Saturday.
We get 10:30, it starts.
That's right.
Yep. Uh, next up is our newly added reporter, second time he's been here. So now we can start being, you know, I won't say.
Asking the hard questions?
Yeah, we can start asking the tough stuff. Kyle, the code enforcer, building inspector is here. He's got information in the packet. Got any general comments you want to make, Kyle?
Uh, nothing, besides it's in my reports, I guess.
Okay. I see we got our grass, our weeds got down out on the bike trail.
On 38.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, don't they need to knock those weeds down on that lot? They're in city, they're in town now.
Right, yeah.
It's, I mean, before those got knocked down, it was pretty wild out there.
Yeah.
Where's this, I'm sorry?
On Windsor, south end of, uh, yeah, and they.
At McIlson.
Oh, no, they were, they kind of were curves up and everything, yeah, I noticed.
Yeah, they cut those down too, didn't they?
Yeah, I noticed that actually, yeah, the other day, I was taking Breyer for driving.
It was pretty bad.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed when you come around corner, you couldn't see that, that curve, so.
Well, Kyle and I had this brief talk, I think we talked about this, Kyle. Not only is the grass growing great, but the weeds are growing great this year, too.
It's been a bad year for weeds.
Yeah, it is really, because there, we've had so much moisture, there's just.
You know, I had someone mention, I don't know, street names, over, um, is it on Opal over there, where we have that drainage in there, and it's the city easement for drainage or something? It's our job to cut the weeds in there.
Oh, behind the houses on Opal?
Between the houses.
Yeah.
Can we seriously, like, give those to the property owners?
Oh, they had them a year ago.
They gave them to us.
That's a long story. They had them, and we took them back, and.
I swatted against it, I didn't want it.
You were right, Craig.
Yes, we don't want those, we don't want those.
Okay, we'll give Craig.
So that the people in those houses didn't want that.
The developer himself, so the property stopped where, where they're at now, but the developer owns that property yet.
Yeah.
Um, so the developer either has to maintain it, take care of it, turn it into some type of district like they did up here, or, um, try to give it to the city, and they succeeded.
So can we give to the homeowners there now?
I don't think they'd ever take it.
Are you sure? Because I feel like some of them think they could do a better job than what we do.
Be nice.
Just based on.
Well, and it's really hard this year, because it's been wet, it's so wet, you can't get in there.
I know, but they, it doesn't stop people from complaining about it.
I know.
But, I mean, is that an option?
I think they'd have to put, I think they'd have to put something together for.
A whole lot.
I don't even, and that's been.
You'd have to start the whole war, see if they wanted it.
That's been four or five years ago since we did that, at least. I wasn't here very long when we did that.
It's been a while.
We could probably go to science, it's free land, see if anybody wants it.
No.
That might not be the best idea.
We don't want it.
Might be.
Well, or if they, if they want to do an HOA and put better drainage, or have some kind of plan to keep, I don't know, but it is nice, or kind of lay them in some of those areas, it's out of control. And I get it, it's wet, you can't drive down there, your sicko mower thing can't reach.
It can only go so far. They do make a mower that actually is remote control, that on tracks, and you can send They do make a mower that actually is remote control, that on tracks and you can send out into those wet areas and mow.
And all you hear.
I was like, oh, just.
As it's sinking.
Kind of spending.
You hear it bubbling as it's sinking.
No, I do think some of those empty labs get out of control sometimes, so it's good to keep an eye on them if you can.
I'm disgusted, I think I visited every single developer in town this year. So yeah, it's been a, been a rough year for weeds.
Well, good point Cindy, yeah, you should have been here when we, when we caved on that one. I should look back at the notes and see how I voted.
Yeah, you're saying.
I was probably one of the culprits on that deal.
So I can say, if you guys want to get an HOA together, we'll give you that land and maintain it, you can have it how you want it.
Yeah, cause we took, right, we took ownership of the land, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Why'd you give it away?
Yeah, all right. Point well taken. Anything else for Kyle? All right, man, you're getting off of, we gotta, we're gonna have to get fired up here one of these meetings, so maybe.
I would like having your report, it is very interesting to look at, I do enjoy.
All his passive parts are in the computer box too. They're under, all the building inspection call reports with passive use right there.
All right, we will move on to the most exciting part of the evening. City engineer report. Man, Michael's got all kinds of stuff for us tonight.
I do, I do. Uh, good evening everyone, uh, we're right into project updates tonight, uh, water resource recovery facility, uh, that one continues to really work towards, um, finalizing that, wrapping that up, putting the ball on it and transferring over to the city. It's, um, it's been a long process, but it's gotten quick. Um, currently working on is the systems integration work, so all those magical components, bringing them together and linking them in so that Craig can basically sit at this control panel and then see the whole plan, but station everything from one spot, take care of it, control it from there.
Hold on one second, thanks Cindy for your nice comments on the, on the video.
It was a cool video.
And if you haven't seen the video, you need to look at the.
It's impressive.
So, okay. Yep, goes on our, uh, Rachel, one of our wastewater, uh, where sort of group leader, uh, Mayor Jones went out, made a video to kind of show off the plant, uh, you know, basically from where it comes in to where it goes out, shows, I mean, incredibly clear water, we have a plant, so two minutes is a nice watch.
Yeah.
Easy to, easy to read with the subtitles since it was a windy day.
Oh, it was terrible windy, yeah.
Yeah, so that's available on the city's website, um, so.
But the other thing I said, I said to Rachel, living where I do, where the lagoons, when it's hot, when the lagoons are full of water, how it smelled at my place, we were standing right on top of the catwalk and I'm telling you, you could not, you could not smell it. Now, it was windy that day, granted, but I was, I would tell you what, I was surprised that it was.
Yep, it's working well.
It is.
We had one little hiccup with it and that was when Aramod came out to fire tune it.
Yeah.
After that, we got her back and she's been working good, so.
Yep.
All right, sorry, Michael.
No, you're quite right. Um, generator startup and commissioning's planned for tomorrow, and then just as a reminder to council, if you would like a tour of the plant, just let us know, we're happy to find time to take out there and, um, show it off for you. Moving on to, uh, Western Avenue, um, so there are a couple of action items for this project, um, in front of you, uh, but generally the roadway is shaved and ready for aggregate base, um, or, um, any additional work depending on how, um, the council decides on the action items. Um, Park's master plan, that is also, uh, in front of you, been provided for council action this evening, um, so we'll get to that when we discuss that specifically. Kelly Avenue drainage study, uh, updated memo was provided, uh, to council for the review, um, just with some of those benefit costs, different, um, options that we've been evaluating, um, anticipated cost estimates as well as, as a few items that we've evaluated as, uh, to be used to determine the benefit for each. So, uh, anticipated completion of that report is, is end of month, so, um, we'll look at that wrapped up and get that, keep that one moving so we can start talking with, um, make a decision on it and then start talking with plant owners if necessary.
If you haven't, Theresa put it out in, under project files and unboxed, read through that, there, it's really, in the state it is right now, it gives you a pretty good feel for what the information is, but we should all really read that and study it before we have to start out with the conversation on that one.
Yep, and if, if you read through it, any questions come up, don't hesitate to reach out, happy to, happy to provide additional information if needed. Uh, last on the product updates is citywide water model, actually was out there today doing flow, static pressure, residual pressure tests, um, so got that done, um, what they're gonna use that to do is to calibrate the model, so they've essentially set up, um, set up their network and have a preliminary run of it, and what they're gonna use is, is the infield pressures to validate, validate the model, uh, to, to make sure that, um, it is operating in attendance and there's no, a hiccup or, um, weird things going on, like you found this on high days today. So, uh, there are a few meters that are gonna continue reading throughout the week, but that's just to see fluctuations throughout the day and how regularly we can use it back to the system. So, uh, with that, that is, is, as a report, happy to answer any questions that you got.
Why don't we, uh, discuss these action items kind of in the order they are? I see, now, do we want to approve the CIP tonight or wait and do that with the budget or?
I, I wanted to get out, out in front of you tonight to have a discussion, see if you guys are good with it or need changes or whatnot before, because the figures for 2026 are incorporated into the budget and if we need doing changes, then.
Right.
I need to make those changes.
Or have a year without new ones.
Any major project, yes, in fact, we had that exact discussion yesterday, Theresa and I did.
That's what I had when I read, I was like, oh, that looks so nice.
I, I know.
We haven't had a year with that little.
We are starting off good this year, but like I said, we don't have any major projects planned for next year. 2027 will be another, a different year, but, um, it'll be good.
So, yeah, that's, uh, I really, and I know the money we put in there for, like for Kelly Avenue is basically to get the engineering if we, depending on.
Yes, that is.
Depending on how we, how we move forward.
Estimated is on foot forward construction, so worst case scenario is.
Right.
Nothing occurs, then that's, that's on just those, so.
Right.
So, so like the first two items for the wastewater treatment facility in Western Avenue, those are costs that we think will trickle over into next year, you know, the last payout, the CD, we're kind of have those, you know, few things to clean up. And then the rest of the projects are basically engineering to prepare for projects into 2027, so, um, those costs are built in there and I said, I have built everything in 2026 into the budget that will be presented next week that we'll go over.
And, uh, I know it's, it's down the ways and it's out of ways, but we actually put a date specific to a pool.
We did.
So, if you didn't notice that, it's on there, so.
And any of this stuff can change, this is just.
Oh, yeah, this is just.
And, and just like our community plan and all our other plans, it's, it's a living document that can be adjusted and changed. We do always review it, especially right before budgets, so once a year, but like I said, just like when we start going and looking at the part plan, it's a fluid document that can be adjusted as things change.
It's nice just to get those big projects, like we know that will be down the road.
Exactly, it's a nice to have it down to, you know, what's coming.
And see the picture, I always think, this, this shows you a really, it shows you a great snapshot on one page.
Right.
What's going on.
Might be kind of nice to have a breather next to you.
Yeah.
It'll be a little bit.
And I think, uh, number 10 should probably be renamed to the Craig Wagner Memorial.
That slipped in here again?
Craig Wagner Memorial Public Workshop or?
Can't be memorial.
Oh, yes, oh, you haven't died yet, we'll just call it the Craig.
I'm thinking about retiring now, we're dying now.
Okay, that's, that's two for me.
If you retire, you'll be dead then.
Exactly. You gotta retire.
Oh, boy.
We're gonna have like a statue of you out there.
Never mind, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the updated CIP.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none will vote. Shelly?
Yes.
Parachek?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Yep, thanks you guys for your work. I happened to just get in on a piece of the conversation with, the day they were talking about this, so. That's maybe why the pool ended up on there because. All right, what do you got next, Michael? Is the next one, the park?
Yes, is Park's master plan, I believe that's been provided to, to council for a little while.
Yeah.
It's gone through approvals through the park director board, uh, and then planning and zoning, uh, now to council for, um, final approval if council decides, so.
I made a motion to approve the master, to park master plan, asked protected by ISG.
Second.
Any more discussion? And again, really kind of one of them living documents, this is some.
Plan's plan.
Yeah, plan is a plan, but this gives us something to.
Plans change.
At least we know, we've talked about this, this is what our thoughts were, this is how we got here, yeah, so.
Things will actually fit, everything should.
Yes, right.
And this pretty much just because of all the new developments?
Yeah.
So we can work with the developer and get the part given development to them and then we can get them to have a good plan.
Yep, yep, yeah, no, really a good exercise, yep.
Yep, be a good document to have.
All right, action from the council on this one.
Maybe just approve this.
Oh, did we approve it already?
I don't think, we haven't voted.
Oh, did we vote? We haven't voted. Mattson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Parachek?
Yes.
Shelly?
Yes.
I need a night off.
Same.
How's that sound? All right, next one, Michael? Now, we're gonna have some fun.
Yes, we will. So, um, Western Avenue, um, as you know, it's, it's been sitting a little motionless for a couple of days now, um, so a reason for that is some, uh, poor soils with exceptionally wet conditions and, and poor stability. Um, so last Thursday, um, ISG contractor and Geotech went out in connection to proof roll, uh, in front of the, that is essentially just a fully loaded dump truck, uh, incredibly heavy vehicle that just drives down each lane, uh, to do a qualitative test of the soil to see, uh, if it's compacted, it's gonna be stable in the roadway, uh, and gonna essentially support the roadway. Uh, what we found is that most locations of the subgrade had greater than two inches of deflection, uh, and some actually sink up to eight inches, typically for subgrade you want to see less than two inches of deflection. All included within the, uh, action item is a memo provided by Geotech, um, they, um, noted that, did not believe that the current pavement section, um, would be, would support traffic based on the subswool, uh, they have provided a few recommendations, um, for, um, modified sections in this area to help support those vehicle tracking quotes. Any questions on that before I discuss the options?
If you remember here, probably a month ago, we did the deal where the first section had similar issues and at that time we did a change order to include and increase the fabric to a heavy duty fabric. That is.
That is a part of this, yes, that was.
But not as extra dollars for that, that's already been figured one time.
That was changed at that time for the entire extended project, yes.
And another thing, Michael and I talked about this afternoon, we also, with this change order, have made provisions that when they get up to Opel or Diamond, Diamond Trail intersection, if there's issues there, that's already factored into this.
Correct.
That that would be fixed.
Quantities that are associated with the.
So, a couple of things for you to think about as we discuss that.
If your subbase fails, your road will fail.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not like you can fix it in surface, as you can imagine, it's, it's a complete, for example, you're digging subs.
And just.
So why 5B?
Why 5B? So 5A is similar, but that's more of a, that pit rock, the larger rock that they're proposing under the aggregate base, we have varying thickness based on solar support, um, with just the contractor's operations and understanding, um, how they're gonna do that work, we believe it's, it's gonna be to a much better project if they have a consistent section that they know they can hit that depth throughout the entire thing, instead of trying to piece it together of over this hundred feet, go 12 inches thick, then, oh, then it's only six, and then back to it, um, it's, it's gonna be, um, a quicker timeline too, if they're not having to individualize it by areas for the thicker section. And then between 5B and 5C, uh, I did reach out to Sean, asking with Geotech, asked his opinion, you know, of, of 5B and 5C, you know, which one would, uh, provide the greatest benefit to the roadway? Um, and he said, he believes that they would provide a similar level of benefit and since 5B is, uh, less expensive than 5C, um, that is, that is the reason for my recommendation.
So I have a question.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand this, so this cost, all of these, these recommendations, these costs, they actually extend all the way down to Diamond if needed?
Correct.
What if it's not needed?
Then we'll have another change order at another project to basically remove that quarry back out.
Okay.
The intent of including that is not having to come back again and no more can ask for more.
Okay.
I, I understood it's, it's a large cost and I.
And who determines?
One trip that banned it off once.
Who determines if that's not needed? Would that be you guys working with Geotech?
Well, we, yes, yep.
Okay.
Which?
So you're on our side, obviously, then, you know, it's not the contractor saying, why do we need to?
Correct.
Yeah, that's.
And the part that's already poured, that, that was good with the fabric and everything?
Correct, yeah. Same, we did, we did, there, Geotech just thought it just needed to be a little bit stronger fabric and we'd be good to go.
So in that area, there's, um, a bit more subgrade support, there's a few small minor
areas that they had to do out of time and extra, add more, um, basically, so this was substantially worse than the previous.
The other thing for the council's benefit that I asked Michael today, so we do all this testing and I just, so the question I said, okay, we do this testing, how much testing would you need to do to ensure that he would catch something like this? Like you told me, there's areas there where it was close to the edge of the road, the next spot was here, I mean, unless you are saying, we're gonna test every whatever, there's really not a good way to test for this to make sure you don't have this happen.
To that, to that point, so we did have four soil borings along the entire stretch of the road conducted prior to design and that was used as the basis for our roadway section. Nothing on those, looking, I looked back at those prior to compiling this just to see if anything was missed, nothing on that really led to any red flags and additionally, um, the, the, the geotechnical report provided in pavement section, which is what we originally used. So based on their best, um, their professional, um, opinion, that was, that was the roadway section that would best perform, you know, we have about 1,700 feet of road and we have four tests, um, along that road, that's only four, four spots that we're trying to get, um, the soil for the entire project. As I discussed, I mean, we could have gotten 12 to 20 tests, but at that point then, you know, Theresa and Craig and then you were probably looking, I was like, that's, that's an excessive number of tests, so it's a little bit about finding that balance.
Yeah.
And you're still not guaranteed.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's really a toss, yeah.
July and August didn't help this project.
No, with all the water. And the other thing we realized too, from the first section when this happened, there was stuff underneath this road that I don't think that we realized that it was maybe gonna be in as bad a shape as what it ended up. Either because of prolonged drainage over the years, water, whatever it may be, there was some stuff going on there that maybe we wouldn't have, wouldn't have realized unless you, you know, made this decision after you dug it out, basically.
What was our original budget number for this project?
Engineer estimate, do you remember?
The engineer estimate was $5 million and something.
This project came in way below.
It was five?
Yes.
Yeah, Western Avenue, we're about $2 million below.
This is, yeah, that's where I was going, I like.
We'll have some savings too with the pavement that we didn't put down for the temporary pavement, so there will be some savings there too.
Yeah.
So I mean, we're, we approve 5B, it's 3.275 million is where we're at, so.
And, you know, think of us in the life of the road, if this, if this section increases in life by five years, I mean, and it's called 30 year road, that's a sixth of the cost, a sixth of 3 million is $500,000, so you're, call it saving 500,000, kind of for inflation Or inflation by spending an extra eighty seven, or, sorry, eighty, eighty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars. So, there, there is that benefit to cost over the life of the road as well.
And we've always taken the approach, we don't wanna do it, it's crazy to spend that kind of money and do it halfway. I mean, if we're gonna do it, let's make sure we build the road that's gonna last. And that road gets a lot of traffic, no doubt about it.
So, you're suggesting 5B, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion to approve change order 5B for the Western Avenue Street project. Is that worth it?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Parachek?
Yes.
Shelly?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, anything else you got, Michael?
I was just gonna note, they anticipate being able to get that oversized rock in and subgrain it by the end of the week, so with the rains that are anticipated, Fred, I believe that'll help keep that, be that nice, and then looking at starting curb another middle next week, just.
We're still, we're still sitting pretty good for fall-wise, winter weather.
Correct, yeah, I, I talked to the contractor about the timeline, I think he just told that I didn't wanna have it before, that was discussing with the council, he said, he said no issues on timeline for him, he still has a fair little part, the DOT portion directly adjacent that he has to tie in too.
I would say, like, I feel like it's gone by pretty quick, like, I feel like they've worked pretty diligently, you know, just as I've witnessed it, I mean, I'm not up there all the time, but it feels like it's moved pretty, pretty fast considering all the rain with.
Yeah, there was noticeable change the last few weeks when you drive by, it's like, oh, that's great.
Yeah, a big bezel, the grass is coming, surprising people.
Yeah. Don't you think that when the citizens are driving up there, they see how nice that first half are, it's a little easier for them to say, oh, you know, this is gonna really be nice when this is done. I think that's maybe helped us too, because it really does look good. When you're coming, when you turn on to Western from up on thirty-eight, look that way, holy smokes, that is really gonna be a change when that's done.
Very nice. We gotta get through this year, construct, but that'll be good.
Yeah, all right, anything else you got, Michael?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a a great report. You didn't get any check marks or nothing. Now, we'll go to Memorial. Craig's report. Oh, Craig.
Really don't have much to add to my report, we're plugging away as best we can, being shorthanded, so, me and Jess have been out the wastewater facility two to three hours every day, just learning stuff out there, going through sapling, looking over plant, doing cleaning, stuff like that. So, it's, that's coming well out there, like I said, we'll just keep plugging away and try to get caught on, so. I do have a couple of things, I guess, for items, I guess anybody have any questions on my report first?
Only a quick question I have is that there's certain areas that we've got another rain, you know, conversation, I guess, and weed conversation. Certain areas along some roads that I've seen like the, where the curb meets the road, and there's weeds along that, that line there, and I've seen some weeds and like some manholes and stuff. Who, I mean, who is?
We try to spray, I mean, we'll, Terry, he was out earlier, got a couple, he scored, did some spraying, he'll go on again, spray some more, we've got the spray there, just not getting time.
I, I haven't seen anything bad outrageous, I just was curious.
Yeah, I see some tracks too, have the weeds are coming up, and it's like that, so we'll get a backup spray, so.
You're good. No, I, like I said, it hasn't been anything bad, I was just more curious how we handle.
I do have a stamp of the amount of moisture, you guys are doing a hell of a job on mosquitoes.
Mosquitoes are doing good.
I, it's, you guys are doing a great job.
Keep trying to keep them knocked down, so.
All right, I see Craig's got a couple of action items in here. First one is the placement, and did we approve to buy these?
No.
No.
He just wanted to come back with the recommendation of.
Okay.
Made to buy, replace them, and.
All right.
So, I drove around the other day coming off the highways and that, Highway thirty-eight's pretty secure except for, which I'll talk to the state, I'll put something down by Old Maple Pass in that area to get the speed slowed down there. The only permanent one that I thought of right now that would probably, because if you come in off of Central State by Sports Complex, once you roll that corner, that's fifty-five. So, I mean, that's, you don't have any quick drop in speeds like you do up on the Cop Road. Coming in off of Western, it's forty-five on the other side of the highway there. So, the speeds are all consistent when you come in from those other sides except for Highway thirty-eight to the Cop Road. So, we thought it'd be, you get the disco, you had to, if you get three of them, we thought we'd put one up on Cop Road where that speed drops quick, and it doesn't make, I mean, it seems like it doesn't make sense, but it's there. And then also, would make, take the other two and make them portable so we can move them around, so when we have people talking about, feels like people are speeding through, throw them out there, put them out there just for reminder, get them slowed down and move to another spot later. They're solar powered, so you don't have to, not always gonna work, but, you know.
Yeah.
It'd be kinda like the speed trailer, except you do, put these out there and look more like an actual speed sign instead of a radar thing.
Yeah.
That's what we're kind of, what we thought would be best with it.
Well, that makes sense.
How would, how would portable work? Would that be real quick, drive us, drive us post in the ground?
Thinking about making a base for them, that we can either throw on, either a base that's heavy enough that the wind can't grab it, or making some small trailers up for them.
Okay, so, trailers, yeah. Yeah.
We'd have to go up with that once we see the weight of the sign and the height of it and everything like, what it happens.
Right. That's a pretty good idea. You guys think that's a good idea? Yeah.
It'd be nice to be able to focus on different projects on a day.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or if there's an event, or, you know, just a reminder to get people slowing down.
Got complaints about a problem area, we can move there, and then if it's another area town, we can move, you know.
And there may be times even when Jonah would say, hey, why don't we throw it?
Right, yeah.
He might, yeah.
How would that be different than the speed trailer that we have?
It'd be both same as speed trailer, it's just, it's gonna look more like a, speed trailer, people see that, they just kinda like notice what your speed is, but like the speed limit sign will actually feel like you're, this is the speed.
Yeah, it's gonna tell them to slow down. Yep. Smack.
And they'll, they'll have the letter, the letter board where it says, you can program different things like slow down, something like that.
If you're going too fast, you don't blink, slow down.
Yeah.
No, I never. They do, grab your eye, I mean.
That's never happened. I don't buy that for one minute.
You're right, for I, for.
We might have to give him a mark for that, because I think he just said something he shouldn't.
So, if we decide to move ahead, this, this is what my recommendation.
Okay.
And, and ultimately, if we say in a year or something like that, we want them permanent.
We can make them permanent.
Can you make them permanent?
Yeah.
Okay, I agree with that, yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchasing, the, the speed devices and the placement plan.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Shelly?
Yes.
Parachek?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right. And the other one you got, Craig, is to go.
Asking for permission to go to the Water and Wastewater Annual Conference in Pierce, September tenth midnight. If we had approved, we'd be going up on the night, this would be for Jesse and myself, if we had approved, we'd be going up the night, I have a board meeting on the night at two o'clock.
Motion to approve the request to attend the South Cutaway Waste Water Association twenty twenty-five annual conference for Jesse and Craig.
Second.
Yeah, multiple seconds, there we go. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Shelly?
Yes.
Parachek?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
The same traction twice in a row, I'm moved up. Anything else, Craig?
Nope, thank you very much. It's all good.
Bad. All right. Oh, I know, do, should I even ask Karen?
Kind of a bummer to see that negative numbers on there from last year.
Oh, yeah, then our tax revenue's a little, little soft.
A little slow this year.
Yeah.
Kinda raining about the same as, as in twenty twenty-four, and this year, we're a little behind, we'll be budget, budget a little bit more. Every year, we seem to increase a little bit some, but it's kind of slow this year, I don't, I don't know the reasoning for that, yeah.
I'll ask official Karen. Karen, do you got anything?
I don't know, I think.
Oh, okay. We gotta remember that line that's gonna have.
The annual, the annual conference?
Oh, yeah.
If anyone wishes to go, I've got some rooms on hold, so just let me know, and I'll get you registered. There is an agenda attached. I think it's subject to change, so, tentative, but, yeah.
That wasn't that we went to, what did we go to? We went to one in the summer.
It was in Pierce, it was in Pierce, cause.
Scott and.
Nelson.
And his air, a hundred degrees in his air conditioner quit on the way home.
It was literally a hundred and eight. Three fat guys with their shirt off.
It was ugly.
Wasn't that bad, but it wasn't that good. Holy smokes.
Too much, right there. You went too far.
Oh, I can't get that visual.
As, as they say, you can't unsee that.
I'm stuck in the backseat, sounds like.
Better not drink this tonight.
All right. Thank you, Karen, for that reminiscent on memory lane. That's good.
When do we need to tell you that? My, I'm not sure if I can make it.
I think it's have a deadline on there for registration.
Okay, we'll, we'll, I'll start looking at it pretty quick here, so.
I definitely don't.
It's probably unlikely that I'll look at it.
Fees increase September eighth, so you gotta know before then.
Okay, perfect. Oh, yeah, there it is.
That's what I. All right, we will move to Teresa's report.
I don't have much to add either, we kinda talked a little bit about the DFC cybersecurity plan. Our open positions, just to let you know where we're at, we did do one preliminary interview for the wastewater treatment operator. We have a couple more, one more lined up, I'm trying to get a third one lined up, so we've got about three applicants looking at it right now. And we'll consider more if they come in, and then we've got about four, gonna be five, forfeiture applicants for the public works position. We're gonna take a look at that at the end of this month, we thought we'd give it a good month to, to get applications in and then see if there are any viable candidates there, and then start interviewing there as well, so, trying to move ahead to get those filled. Besides that, the last couple of weeks, I've been working hard on budget, all of a sudden, Karen and Craig helping us, so it's been a very busy month. Should have your budget packet in your box tomorrow morning, so, I want to give you guys a good week to be able to review it, so. Appreciate if you look at, there's a lot of information, and those that's been here before know that to look at, appreciate if you look at it over, if you have any questions, you know, shoot it to us before the meeting, especially if it's something we probably need to research or to look up, it, it's kind of hard to do it on the fly and whatnot, so. Yeah, so take a look at it and let us know if you have any questions at all, and we will have that meeting next Wednesday, so.
Yeah, like Teresa said, if you have any questions, at least try to make a initial contact so we can, if there's information we need to have ready that night, we'll have it.
Right.
So. Anything else for Teresa? All right, hearing none, thank you. We'll move to new business, we have a couple items on there from the park and rec. Board, first one is, they're asking for a release of twenty-five thousand off of their budget for concrete up at Swenson Park.
So, they're looking at, on the field that's getting used right now, there's Field Two, that's where the high school plays and everything like that. They'd like to look at putting concrete underneath the bleachers, and then also have a border that goes out around, so it makes it a little bit easier for people to get around up there, it just, it helps with the mowing, keeping the weeds down that field, we'll dress it up. Eventually, they'd like to have more concrete or any other ones, but they have this money available yet that they would like to, which we have money set aside for concrete work, so this is what they'd like to release it for.
Right, and they're on grass, just on the ground?
The bleachers are.
The bleachers are just on the. Just on the ground.
Yeah.
It'll also help a little bit, one of Craig with, there's folks with wheelchair, yeah.
Yeah, they're looking at possibly, seeing where they're at for money, then you have to have put in, either next year, or probably next spring or whatever, asking for money to put a main sidewalk going out with two laterals going off to the other two fields, so that they'll be eighty-eight applied to, so.
Okay.
Where does the, I see it's the second action item, but from the advertising out there, where does that money go?
So, the park, the expenses for the park board come out of the general fund, this money goes into the general fund, so, it's all.
I, I think that would be a great source of like continual improvements, you know, for that group, what they sell for advertising or other things that field rental, stuff like that, to kind of pay for some, you know, at least to understand what those numbers are.
We, we track that, right?
I say we track it, I said it goes to the general fund, we can, we track, and we've got line items for everything coming in, I mean, can't specifically earmark it, park board, but we can track.
Well, you know.
How much money.
But you know, as a budget, you can see that in the general fund, this money went back.
Exactly, we got this much for advertising.
I mean, I think just, it's of interest to me to know, like, what do we get for field rent, what will we have coming in for advertising?
Right.
Because I don't think I really have a problem, like, I know we don't maybe earmark, but like, kind of turing up those funds for continual improvements out those fields, probably not enough for what they're asking, but maybe someday it'll be enough to do kind of continual things, I don't know.
All right, any action on that first one?
Make a motion to release twenty-five thousand dollars of budget funds for concrete work at Swenson Park.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Parachek?
Yes.
Shelly?
Yes.
All right, the second one is the aforementioned agreement on advertising. I in fact talked with Duncan a little bit yesterday. He's already, he's got two or three other people, he is bulldogging people, that's really good.
Great role.
So.
Previously, we approved this advertising agreement to basically allow banners up at the sports complex, they could buy, for five hundred dollars, they could put up a banner every year, you know, there, so you could either purchase the banner, or you, for a thousand dollars, you can have space on one of the scoreboards around those spots that you're gonna advertise in there. The addition is basically, we've added another line item that versus five hundred dollars a year, if you commit to doing three years, we've knocked that down to four hundred dollars a year, so they get a little break, but we can have that commit, you know, we have guaranteed three years of that, so, I think it's a, and like I said, Duncan's been out kind of, he was at Jamboree Days and talked to a couple people, not working, so, he has, I know for sure at least two, possibly three or four are interested in doing that three-year commitment, so.
And so, that three-year commitment will be offered then to all of the other businesses that eventually, their year is up.
Yeah.
Then they'll be offered the discounted rate.
Well, we talked about the park board that, you know, we, when we originally put this out, we didn't have that three-year commitment in there. We have got three sponsors right now that have already just paid the five hundred, and they didn't get that chance.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna reach out to them and say, if you guys approve this, that, you know, hey, here's, here's another deal, if you would like to commit for three years, we'll, you know, work you in that price, well, the five hundred will go towards the twelve hundred for the three years, given that, we'll offer it to them too, I think that's only fair.
Yeah, fair and sound.
Yeah. All right, action on this one, or did we already do that?
Nope.
Yeah, lose the track.
Motion to approve amendment to advertising agreement for discounted rates.
Second.
It's gone so quick, you know, did a lot of them.
I know. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Shelly?
Yes.
Parachek?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right. I would like to go executive session for economic development for a couple minutes to update the council.
Motion to go to executive session under economic development?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, boy. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, uh, adjourned.